Thank you. I would like to call the City Council meeting to order on August 8th, 2018. Tonight Mayor Writing is excused and I will be chairing the meeting as Mayor Pro Tem and all other council members are present. We'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance and it'll be led by one of our Boy Scouts, Isaac Shelton, Troop 1577.
Will the audience please arise? Please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, an individual whose liberty and justice for now.
Thank you, Isaac. And next on the agenda is City Manager and Staff Comment, so I will turn this over to Mr. Bricky, our City Manager.
Thank you, City Council. I would just make a comment that anybody watching this, please know that next Tuesday is a hearing involving Truth and Taxation. It begins at 6:00 PM and we hope the auditorium and the room is full and we get to hear from citizens. In the meantime, if they have questions about why it is the city is wanting 20%, please look at our website. There's an explanation of why we think we need that amount with an explanation that includes pie charts and an ability to look up what your contribution would be based on the assessed value set by the Salt Lake County Assessors Office. Besides those comments, I know that we have just two members of the staff that would like to comment, the Chief Police as well as the Director of Public Works.
All right. Thank you. Either one of you want to be first? Chief, how about you be first?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Last night was pretty successful on the National Night Out and we want to thank those that attended and helped participate. It was probably one of our better years last night. We had 14 parties and at least the parties that I saw that we went to were pretty full. So we received a lot of support from the community with it and it was nice to see and again, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just wanted to pass on some good news. On the onset of the Public Works building the new facility, there was an electric vehicle charging station in the design of that building. Justin Stoker and Patrick Alcorn have been working diligently with Rocky Mountain Power for a grant that they have available. We got word yesterday that we received $70,000 for the grant, which will pay 85 to 90% of the project cost. So that'll be starting here quickly as they finish up the building. I just wanted to let you folks know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for those. And that was all, David?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
All right, thank you. We'll go to our council reports and I'm going to change it up a little bit and go with, start with Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you. Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Burton?
I'm going to make up for Councilman McConaughey. I do have several things tonight. First, I see we have a couple of Boy Scouts here with us. I'd like to welcome the Boy Scouts. Thank you for joining us. This is a great opportunity for you and we appreciate what the Boy Scouts do for our youth. Second thing is that Truth and Taxation hearing that Mr. Bricky was talking about is happening on Tuesday next week. To help prepare for that, I am holding a town hall meeting tomorrow night here at City Hall at 7:30. Even if you're not in my district, you're welcome to come. I want to hear from you and share information to you and hear back from you on your thoughts about the possibility of raising taxes. If any council members want to attend, you're welcome to. Just let me know so I can make sure we do not get a quorum otherwise. So first come, first served on that. The other thing is, there has been for several years some issues on Wasatch Metals Drive where the drainage has been working properly and Public Works is in the process right now of getting that taken care of for us. So thank you, Brian, and your staff. I stopped over and chatted with them for a few minutes and I did not write my name in the concrete. The other item is, the Utah League of Cities and Towns is having their conference coming up in September and one of the things that happened in their September conference is they put in new board members and second vice president. And I have run for those positions for the last couple of years and have not been selected. But I think the odds are really good this year because one of the things that helps is how many times you've attempted. And the others had higher attempts than I did in the past and since they got put on, now I am the next one there. So if there's no objection from anyone on the council, I would like to submit my name a third time to the Utah League of Cities and Towns for the second vice president and for a board member on their board.
Thank you. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I would not have any objection to that. I would just want to make sure that for any item that you address, it's known that if the council hasn't taken a formal position, it's a personal opinion and not necessarily the position of the city. So I would just want to be very, very clear in everything with the league that under our former government, it would be advisory, anything that they needed a formal position would have to come back to us and then you could bring that back. But I would not have any objection and making sure that that was well-known and communicated.
Thank you for that. I understand and totally agree. And in my position there, I wouldn't be able to represent the city except for on specific things where we do normally anyway. But thank you for that clarification. The Wasatch Front Regional Council has an active transportation committee that they've had for a while and I've gotten some emails forwarded to me a couple of times with the suggestion that I join that committee and that probably is a good one for me. So I actually attended their meeting today to see if that would be a committee I would be interested in serving on and that is. So I want to bring that to the council here as well to see if there's any objection from the council if I serve on the active transportation committee with the Wasatch Front Regional Council.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So in this one, since it's not, since it's somebody appointed by the city to serve there, that would need to come back to the council for a vote by resolution. So just procedurally, I don't necessarily have any objection at this point, but just to make sure we follow the rules that state that anybody representing the city officially in any capacity needs to be approved through a resolution. So I wouldn't have any objection to put that on a future agenda to bring back.
Very good. Any other comments to that one? I will proceed with that as well then. Thank you. Okay. The next couple of items I want to discuss have slight history, so I'm going to just review that a little bit then go over there. So you may recall that it's been almost two months now that I brought up the Boy Scouts, supporting the Boy Scouts and the possibility of green bikes. And one of the concerns the city has of being a sponsor for the Boy Scouts is liability. And fortunately, our attorneys are looking into that and they will get back to us on that in next month. And I may be talking to them about that sooner to get some feel on that, which I think is appropriate. On the green bikes, when I brought that up, there was some concern from our attorneys about liability with green bikes. That will take a longer time before that actually happens because there's some costs that's incurred and I don't want to use city funds to put the green bikes out here. So I'm looking and hoping for some grants that may be available, which I'll pass that information on to Mr. Bricky and he can give it to appropriate staff as soon as it becomes available. But I would still like to follow up and pursue that to see if the council would be interested in doing some green bikes. My thought is, and as I've talked to some green bike people, a good location would be on the Jordan River Trail, particularly near Gardner Village and then maybe another place north. But I would like to wait until West Valley gets some. They're talking about putting some in West Valley on the trail and then have a kind of work down the trail and maybe get some in Murray and in between and make a path because they have them in Salt Lake City. And I think if we just do it here, we don't have a tie-in with some others. It's premature. So if there's no objection, I'll continue to watch that and as I get information on that, I'll bring it towards the council. Very good. Okay. The next one is, I serve on the Jordan River Commission, as I've mentioned before. And in September, the Jordan River Commission has a fantastic event they do every September. It's called Get to the River Event. And Wes Jordan's attempted to participate before, but we haven't actually formally done it. We would like to formally participate in that this year. So I shared that with Lindsay, our events coordinator, and she got excited and says, "That would be great. We could probably do something like we could get people in boats and canoes and go down the river and pick up trash out of the river." And I thought, "Oh, that sounds like a fun idea." But then she called me back maybe two hours later and said, "No, there's some liability issues. We can't do that." And I thought, you know, I've heard these liability issues before. So when I went to my commission meeting, I told them, because I, when I heard that, I got excited to pass that on to them. So I got there, I told them we wouldn't be doing that due to the liability issues. And another city says, "Well, we do something similar like that every year. We haven't any problems." And I says, "Well, that may be the case, but we have some concerns on our end." And then the Jordan River Commission themselves says, "Well, if you want to do that, you could do it under our name instead of the city's name and still do that. We have canoes and we have done those events before and we have insurance and you could do that and say you're doing it under the Jordan River Commission. It just happens to be happening in West Jordan." So there's that possibility we could do. And then I also happened to notice as I was looking at the agenda, the Utah League of Cities and Towns is going to be using the commission's canoes and doing a folk down the river themselves. So we may have several elected leaders that are down there. I think it's a little late this year to try and do something like that and work out liability issues and figure out if we can get the risk low enough to make it worthwhile. So this year, we'll probably just do a trail cleanup. I know we won't get as many people, but it'll still be good. I want to get as many people as we can to know what the trail's like, to see it, to feel it and to use it. The more it's used, the safer it becomes, the safer it becomes, the more enjoyable it comes. So we'll probably just be doing that this year. And then if you are interested in actually getting into the river for next year, then let me know and we can start working on what it would take to make that happen. Are there any thoughts on that?
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. No, I didn't have anything other than commentary. It sounds like that might be a little bit more of a prolonged conversation, so I would suggest we agendaize that. I don't necessarily have any objection, but given where we're at in the course of the year, the events that have already been approved, changes to staffing in the Events Department, probably not a bad thing to have some conversation. Historically, we had conflicting events competing on the same days. We had the Mayor's Mile, for example, that was taking the same place the morning of the Get to the River and there was a lot of demand upon staff. So I wouldn't mind further conversation, but I would hold off on any further comment during this remarks session until it's formally agendaized so we can actually give good direction. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
So, and that's my intention was to hold off for next year for the actual Get to the, just the trail cleanup. Were you proposing that to hold off till next year as well?
No, I don't necessarily have an objection to that. I just think if it's something that requires council approval, then let's put it on the agenda so we can talk further. If it's something similar to like when we do service and fees or Eagle Scout projects or some of the other ad hoc sort of service projects the city does that don't require council approval, then I would have no objection to staff proceeding with that. But if it's something that does require formal approval, then let's have it agendaized and have a good conversation because there have been some other reasons why we haven't done some of these things and some of the connections with some of the different entities that are out there. And the conversation would be a little bit more protracted than something that we could reasonably cover in the comments portion of the meeting.
Thank you for that. So really what I'm just looking for is if you are interested in doing that, then let me know. Then I will agendaize it. If you're not interested in doing that, then I won't even agendaize it. We'll just go on from there. Okay. Thank you. Okay. And the last thing I want to talk about is the National Night Out, which Chief Davis mentioned a few minutes ago. I held one in my own neighborhood and it was not my best attended, but it was fairly well-attended. We had approximately 150 people. It's hard to say because people move around so quick. We tried to count them. It was very good and it was successful. But something I learned on putting this together just this year is the person who usually does our activities, of course, is done with volunteers. Now, keep in mind, although this is, this, let me say a word to this right, Mr. Bricky. This isn't sponsored by the city, but it's endorsed by the city or something like that because the city doesn't actually put it on, but the city supports it. So would endorse be a good word for the National Night Out that we could use?
I can't hear you. I'm not sure I understand the question.
Supports. For the National Night Out, the event that we had last night, it's not actually put on by the city. It's put on by the individual neighborhoods. So I wouldn't want to say the city is sponsoring it because they're really not, but maybe I was going to say maybe the endorsing or supporting or I'm trying to figure out what the right term to be, the city's relationship with National Night Out that's done in the neighborhoods. It's not that important. I just want to, I just want to make it clear that it's not, these are not city events. They're neighborhood events. But it's coordinated with the city so the city participates in them. But anyway, so I had a volunteer who was going to be doing our games. He's done them for the last few years. And we had a hiccup. They couldn't do those games. So I thought real quick, I would give our events person a call and say, "Who did you use for the blow-up toys in the park? Maybe I can get them to come out here." It would be through us, not through the city. We could do that. And that's when I learned that the city can do blow-up toys in the parks, but others can't do blow-up toys in the parks. And I thought, "Why?" In my mind, I didn't talk to me about this. I'm sure it's because of liability that would happen when people do it. And there have probably been some incidents in the past. So my thought is, it looks like a double standard when we say the city can put in blow-up toys in the park and people can come and play on them, but other people can't put blow-up toys in the park and do it. So I'm thinking if it's that bad for other people to do them, then it should be bad for the city to do it. And maybe we should have it so the city doesn't do it. Or if there's a way that the city can do it to make the risk minimize enough, you know, maybe have a full-time staff person there from the place you rent the events from who watches it and sees that it's safe and do that. So I'm just thinking whatever it is that makes it for the city can do it and we should make it so the public can do it. But if it's going to be too much of a risk for the public to do it still, perhaps we should look at that and the city should not be doing it as well. And I can tell Councilman McConaughey, who doesn't have anything to say, has something to say. So I'd like to hear if that's okay with you, Mayor Pro Tem.
What I'm going to do before I allow Councilmember McConaughey to speak is, I think this is designed for comments, this section of the agenda. So some of this dialogue that's going back and forth between you and Councilmember McConaughey and staff and liability issues, I think is best reserved for the remarks section towards the end of the agenda. And so I think for the rest of the council members, if we could keep these to comments that are not dialogue-related, I think that would help our agenda flow a little better. Is that, would you be okay with that?
That's all I have, Mayor Pro Tem.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Burton. Councilmember McConaughey, did you have a comment or?
No, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. That's just what I was going to hit on because this is the council reports section. Again, if it's something that requires a decision by the body or a more elongated conversation, I have no objection to putting anything on the agenda. But in the interest of moving things along, that was my similar recommendation. So you hit the nail on the head. Thank you.
Okay. And I just think going forward, even if Mayor Writing were here, I think that's how we ought to run going forward, is leave these to reports and comments. And if there's something that's dialogue, that we reserve that for the remarks section at the end. So with that, we'll go to Councilmember Lamb.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitelock?
I want to thank Kristy Jacobs and J.C. Holt and all the others that participated in the Night Out. I got to ride along with this guy over here that I can't remember his name.
Sanders.
How embarrassing. Lieutenant Sanders. And we were able to go to a couple of events. And then at the end, I went to where my neighborhood was holding their event because they do this huge water slide that all the children tell me is awesome. I didn't let my grandchildren go because I thought it looked like liability. But you can't say it's wonderful. So thank you so much for the time that's put into that. I really enjoyed visiting with the citizens and was quite happy with the things that, the dialogue that we had. It was a very friendly dialogue and I wondered what it might be when we were going out in light of this coming Tuesday. So thank you to the citizens that participated and everyone. That was great.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Whitelock. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just want to concur with what everybody's been saying about the Night Out. I unfortunately was not able to attend. I had every intention of attending a few of those in my district and was not able to because I had some family things come up. So I hope everybody had fun. I've gone the previous couple of years and have had a good time getting to know the neighborhoods and the neighbors. And they're really a great, a great opportunity. I think we should do it more than once a year personally. But yeah, so good job with everybody who participated in that and that's all I have.
Thank you. And I'll just give a couple of remarks. I too participated in Night Out Against Crime last night. We visited three activities, three parties. Large one with the slide. I did not go down the slide. Not to liability, I wasn't dressed for it. But it was great to meet the residents and talk with them and visit with them about their concerns and their desires. And I wish there were more events where neighbors would get out that we could go to and visit. It was probably, between the three of them, probably 100 people, most of the slide. So it was wonderful and I appreciate, there was a comment about how the, unrelated to Night Out Against Crime, there was a comment about how we water our parks. And I talked to David Naylor, Director of our Parks Department, for about 45 minutes the other day earlier this week to get an understanding of how we water and the number of zones in some of our larger parks. 30 zones watering for 30 minutes is 15 hours of watering. And so I just appreciate the efforts that Parks makes to keep our parks green and watered appropriately, even though sometimes sprinklers don't do what we want them to do. So I appreciate that. So that's all of our communications from the council and our staff. So now we will open up citizen comments. This will be the only opportunity, we have no public hearings tonight, so this will be the only opportunity for citizens to speak. If you're here to discuss an item that is on the consent calendar, a business item, or something that is not on the agenda, this will be your only opportunity in this meeting to discuss those items. Please keep your comments to the items that have not already been addressed by other members of the public so that we can keep the meeting moving. You'll have a three-minute time limit and I will start with those who have signed up in advance. And the only one that I have right now is Stephen Jones. And I don't, you don't need to give your contact information.
Okay. After all these years, we
After all these years.
Find out who I am. Okay, thanks. Appreciate being here again tonight. Just a couple of quick things pertaining to the Truth and Taxation. One of the things that I saw in the, I guess, pre-look at the presentation that's going to be done tonight was a pie chart. And to be honest with you, the first thing I thought of in the pie chart was, is yeah, we have this, the way that our dollars are spread out, you know, per dollar, which is great information. The thing that really jumped out at me is, is why is the county receiving more funding than the city I live in? That really kind of stepped me a little bit. I mean, I shouldn't have been no surprise after all these years, but in my mind, where I live should get the biggest chunk and then go from there. The other thing that kind of jumped out at me or reminded me was, is the amount of taxes that I do pay. Now, I'll be the first one to admit, I love our police and fire and I consider them an integral part of our city and our society. They keep the elements that are undesirable out and about. So as far as this particular tax increase, I have no problems doing it because I know where the money's going to. The part that gets me though is to remind the council that if I had a pie chart and had it broke up to how much I get taxed in my dollars, I think we would all be quite surprised. When I started thinking about how much I pay in fuel taxes and everything else, and then how much of those taxes are intermingled. In other words, I get money from the federal government for my federal energy tax or gas tax that comes back to my city, but then I also have the city funding projects. And so when I start putting those things all together, you can understand that I'm a little concerned about where we spend our money. There are critical things that happen in a city that are absolute. And again, fire and rescue are absolute. The functioning of the city, I look at our city clerk. She's an integral part of this city in keeping things straight. There are things in this city that I do not consider integral that I have a problem with. And, you know, one of them I can, just right off the top of my head is people are, you know, saying things about snow removal. To me, I could care less about snow removal. We get two or three major storms a year and if you can't suffer through that, well, it's tough. But there's a lot of money that goes out just so somebody can have an uneventful ride in the morning. The other one is our bicycle lanes. It's a pet peeve of mine. We're out there painting and spending dollars of my gas tax to paint lines so that probably less than 1% of the city residents can use. And that's a grind. So to me, if I want to save money, that's where I would do it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other names of those who have signed up in advance. So it's now, if anyone would like to speak, if you'll just raise your hand, you can come up to the microphone. Okay, seeing none, I will close the citizen comment and move on to the consent calendar. I've been asked to pull Item G, which is a request from Wes Jordan Middle School. And Dave, I understand that that has already been paid by an anonymous citizen?
That is correct. That matter's been resolved and we appreciate it.
All right. So, does anyone want to pull anything else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent calendar, less Item G.
Let's make a second to that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Councilmember Burton. Any discussion to the motion? Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm not sure if I caught what you just said about Item G, the waiver of fees for the middle school. Did you say that that had been paid by a resident? So that's no longer needed to be on here?
That's correct.
Okay. The one thing I would have said, I would have been okay with it, but I would have still commented, for things like this, I still very much prefer to see service and lieu of fees. If they're willing to do a little bit of cleanup in the park along with their other effort that's there, I very much prefer to see service and lieu of fees rather than just the waiver. So if there are any requests for something similar, if, my personal request to staff would be to direct them towards service and lieu of fees rather than the waiver request. So that's all. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
All right. Thank you. And I think that's, I think that's how this council has discussed it so far this calendar year. So we have a motion by Councilmember Jacob and it was seconded by, oh, did we, we need to do a roll call. Any other discussion, I guess, is where I need to be. Seeing none, we'll have a vote. Melanie?
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is business items. Discussion and possible action regarding proposed improvements to 5490 West Street. Brian Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn the time over to Dave Murphy. He's going to present on this.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. This item was brought up by council a few months back and wanting to know exactly what the disposition of 5490 West Street will be in the future. Portions of that road are presently a private lane. The city does have easements for The city does have easements for water system that we currently have over that street area. And the report in front of you basically details how the roadway developed in the past. It was a rural residential street and, but now, for the past 10 years, it's having development pressure forced onto that street and areas around it. There's desires for certain lots in that five-acre lot subdivision to redevelop and be turned into denser housing units. And so, right now, we went back and, with the help of David Clemens and Lori Thompson, we put together a little bit of a plan here and aerial view, so you can see what's happening along the road and what the intent of the city is in the future as far as capital improvements. Worthy of note here is that back in the 1990s, when certain developments did gain acceptance and approval for certain housing lots, at the time, there was an HOA, and, and there still is out there, governing the roadway. And that HOA elected to allow the city to turn that into a public street by the year 2022, if the city so elects. And that is part of the restricted covenants of the subdivided area that happened in the past. And so, the city just needs to elect to move forward, and that would turn 5490 West into a 60-foot road that's dedicated as a public street. Current improvements here along this section, city council went ahead and allowed staff to look at rolling forward with a roundabout design at 78th. That was a couple of months ago. Presently, we are working on a waterline project coming out of a new reservoir behind the Smith store that will attach to Pressure Zone 3. That includes work on 5490. Peterson Development is developing this corner as part of the Highlands Development. That's at 56 West and 78 South, and it runs on the backside here along 5490. That will contain sewer improvements for the lots along this loop road extension here that comes off of the Smith store. And so, that sewer line is part of the physical waterline improvements at the same time because of the vertical elevations that have to be accommodated. And we are also working issues along this section of 5490 right now with Peterson Development as well for roadway dedication. So, the rest of this up the lane here towards 78 South includes Barber Estates and Winter Circle. Those are two subdivisions that have been recently approved. They do go into the, they don't bring traffic onto 5490, they bring traffic into the West Jordan Meadows subdivision area. But the future improvements along 5490 for, for Bowler Properties here and for this next subdivision here could indeed bring some of that traffic out onto 5490 and pushing forward the need for it to become a public street. When these rural residential lots developed as well back in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, they were developed as lots without sanitary sewer collection system. And so, as part of the sanitary sewer master plan update in 2012, the city put on its plans the ability to put a sewer line out here approximately to this location that would flow down to 7800 South. Again, a portion of that is already being designed, and this, this year, the rest of that sanitary sewer system is being designed for the rest of the roadway. When normal development happens, they always put in a sewer collection system as part of the county health code requirements. And when you're within 300 feet of a sanitary sewer collection system, you're supposed to connect to that system. So, there will be a, a little bit of reconnecting residents that probably go to septic systems right now onto that sanitary sewer system in the future. And that build could happen very quickly in the next couple of years. So, that gives you kind of the general layout of what current development pressures are along the roadway, what city options are for future road here, future utilities along the road. Again, there's an existing 16-inch pipeline that runs the whole distance of 5490 West, and that, that's in its own 20-foot exclusive easement right now, but that could become just part of the public street in the future. There are cross-sections in your packet, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions at this point.
Okay, we have a question from Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, tell me what happens again in 2020, 2022?
That is when the current agreement to turn the roadway into a public street would expire. It's July 11th, 2022.
Does that mean it will become a public street if we don't do anything, or that means it won't become a public street?
It's not automatic. We have to declare our intent to make it a public street.
Okay. Do we intend on having it become a public street on that date? Do we need to prepare for that?
Most likely before that date.
So, we should make preparations on that date when we inherit it or when it becomes a street? Do we purchase that from them, or do we just inherit it?
The cross-section would show what a 60-foot road means, and this is a collector street and should be a 70-foot road. So, there's approximately 10 feet of property acquisition. When the subdivisions have been developing, they have been dedicating that extra 10 feet, five feet from either side of the street. So, that will become part of the future build and part of what the city would have to build in, into the street envelope at, at that time. And, and it's not automatic. We have to declare our intent to make it a public street, but the covenants for the subdivision say if we do declare that, they automatically dedicate 60 feet, we would pay for the extra 10.
Okay. And the, the other question I have is, I saw the roundabout at 78th. How will it connect at 70th?
The intent is as, as a T-intersection, not as a roundabout.
Okay. Because now there's a gate there, so that gate would come down, just be a normal intersection. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a, a quick question as far as the residents on that street. From what I gather, in the time I've been on the council and before, they're not against turning that into a public street, is that correct? Are the majority for a public street or against? Do we have any thoughts on that?
I haven't recently polled the public out there to see what they absolutely want. But again, it's part of the covenants that are out there right now on existing lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a couple of thoughts. With the HOA having the covenant set up so it automatically turns over, could potentially turn over to the city, that's the residents who are there saying, yes, we would like the city to take it. Over the, going on seven years that I've been on the council, we've heard from them a number of times, most of them would like the city to take it because there are some city utilities that are, that are already there. And like many HOAs, they're finding it's more and more expensive every year to maintain those roads. So, that's where my question is. We have an ordinance that requires that the roads be at city standards before we can consider taking over. Do they meet the standards aside from the lacking the, the 10 feet? What's the current condition of the asphalt? At the same time, I think we had a conversation three years ago about, well, the asphalt would need to come out anyway as we'd be putting in some of these additional utilities. So, what color and background could you add would be my question?
Thank you, Councilmember McConaughey. That's a great question. Currently, the road exists as about a 25 to 30-foot street. Basically, two lanes, a little bit of a shoulder, but no curb gutter, no sidewalk. So, under the definition, it doesn't meet current city standards. But when we go out and acquire a new easement for the proposed sewer, or we ask that it become a public street, perhaps there's negotiating distance to obtain the other five feet for nominal value of a dollar, and the city puts in the other improvements, curb gutter sidewalk. When we do the sewer line, we will be removing and replacing about half of that road. And that's just necessary because of the depth of sewer and placement of that sewer, being able to accommodate the laterals that come into it. This just shows you the layout of what we've got out there now. We do have that 16-inch water. We're putting in a new 20-inch water. There's an existing 24-inch storm drain. That's all resting within that easement boundary for the water line that's existing. The new sewer line will impact the, the road and have issues with replacing half the road. The rest of it, curb gutter sidewalk, that's going to be at our option.
Thank, thank you. The, the one other comment that I'll make, since you talked about the additional real estate would be, that would be needed, I'm actually going to hold that for, well, when we're talking about the acquisition or strategy for acquiring property, that's one of those items that we can discuss in closed session. So, I'm going to hold my thoughts on that until we can discuss in closed session. So, I will, I think I'll turn back the floor at this point. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I don't see any more discussion items. Any questions for staff? Okay. I'll look forward to a motion. That was not a motion? Okay. Possible action. All right. Next item, discussion and possible action and possi, discussion and possible action regarding a comprehensive analysis of the Chamber of Commerce. Ken Anderson.
Take us up to slide number one. Hit Ctrl L and then go up to slide number one. And then just scroll up. Or maybe I can. There we go. Perfect. Thank you. Mayor Protem, council, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Few months ago, I was asked to come and bring a presentation to the council regarding possible courses of action and recommendations for a relationship with the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce. I've had some time to interact with some chambers in our community. I've done some additional research. I've done some background research. For this presentation today, for reference, I want to look at what our 17, 2017, 2018 agreement was with the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce, to kind of give a snapshot of what we had agreed to, of what we would like to achieve through that relationship and what resources were being allocated. We'll take a look at three examples from other chambers of commerce, have a discussion of goals, and then finally, the options. So, first, let's look at the service contract and the lease agreement. So, there's two agreements that you may or may not be aware of. One is the service contract. That was for 2017, 2018, was for $48,000. The next slide will talk about the specific items that were related to that. One that you may not have, be fully aware of is the lease agreement. The lease agreement for their space on the first floor of this building is automatically renewed, requires 60 days' notice prior to the end of the fiscal year to terminate or to revise that contract. Working with facility, there's about 1,700 square feet. This includes utilities, common area maintenance, repairs, et cetera, so quite a, quite a good package. The amount that the chamber pays per month is $100. This is paid every month. This was revised and amended in 2009. It was $900 at that time per month and then revised down to 100. There is no services in lieu of this payment identified in that contract. Looking at, just trying to come up with evaluation. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Councilmember McConaughey has a question.
Sorry to jump in, just a quick question on this.
No, please.
Auto renew requires 60-day notice before end of fiscal year. Is the chamber on the same fiscal year as we are?
It's the city council. That's the way the agreement was tied up, was going to be from July 1st to June 30th. So, I say, sorry, I meant to say the council's fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question.
Ken, I've got one more question.
Please.
Councilmember Whitelock.
I just want to know on utilities, does that include telephone?
You know what it does? Yeah. I thought that it did.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks, Ken.
No, please. And I think a discussion is important to this, so please feel free to stop me and ask clarifying questions as we move through. To provide a value, as there was not one identified in the lease agreement, I looked at, just, just recently, Newmark Grub Acres came out with an office valuation for this market area. The achieved lease rate for office was $18 a square foot a year. So, if you looked at their floor plan, essentially, it's $31,000 annually of a value. So, if you monetize both what the 1718 membership contract was and then the lease agreement, minus their $1,200 per year that they pay for the lease, you're looking at an annual contribution of $77,000 plus. So, let's look at the 1718 service contract. And I've tried to categorize these a little bit. They had a number of different items, but I think it's good to look at it of, kind of a, of a goal perspective. So, economic development, legislative advocacy, communication and feedback, and events and programs seemed to be what was important to the council at the time for the chamber to focus on. Some of these are more specific than others, and that gets to be a bit of a challenge when it comes to interpreting whether or not an entity is meeting what they had said that they were going to do in terms of an agreement. You look at, just identify needs and suggestions and the business climate, those are nice to do's, but they're very hard to quantify on whether or not you're meeting this and to what extent.
Ken, I have a, if you back up the slide, I just have a question. The legislative advocacy, do you know how in the contracts, the bullets here say review city council agendas and send rep to city council meetings to represent interest of city businesses? Is there anything in there that relates to interfacing with the county or interfacing with the legislature?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm just looking for the exact language in here, so I can just read it to you. I apologize. I thought it would jump out faster, but no, there was no specificity to, exactly to the legislature or to the county. It sounds like this language is pretty indicative of what the contract expected was to review council agendas, send attendees to represent business issues, and then to host a government action council, but nothing specific to either county or state legislative issues.
Okay.
So, let's look at a couple of other chambers in our community and see what their relationships between their city and the chamber is. Sandy City has a very similar contract. It's for $60,000. It's a business service contract. They have an additional contract on the side with their redevelopment agency to run one specific program. Something that does occur, that I'm not aware of it occurring in this city, is that they have a city management analyst that will verify the return on investment each year. So, they'll go through and work with the chamber, talk about how they have met certain goals and determine whether or not the value was greater than what the city was paying on that. Their location, their space, is not subsidized by the city at all. One thing that, that came out in conversation with Sandy City staff was their impression that the chamber's success and the city's success were tied together. So, I think that just provides a little bit of a context of what their relationship is with the chamber. As was mentioned at a previous meeting, West Jordan Chamber of Commerce has been engaged about joining and combining Chambers of Commerce with Sandy. Chamber West, Chamber of Commerce, they have three partners, West Valley, Taylorsville, and Kearns. They have very simple fee structures, and they, both West Valley and Taylorsville partner at the highest level from a membership perspective. West Valley is considering a contract for services. I don't have any details on what that would entail, but both are, both Taylorsville and West Valley are paying a $10,000 membership. Kearns is at, current paying nothing. The platinum member pretty much provides you some additional features, tickets to galas, et cetera. Location also not subsidized. One of the comments that I heard from the Chamber West director was believes that chamber regionalization would build a strong legislative force and combine infrastructure and leadership. So, again, probably another opinion of support for joining chambers. South Salt Lake Chamber of Commerce, seven years ago, they were as high as $80,000 from a partnership. They switched more to a performance-based contract. Last year, they paid out last fiscal year $52,000. But as of 1819, South Salt Lake decided to end a performance-based contract and partner only as a member. They do, the chamber does lease space from the city. However, there is in-kind services that are required to be provided. They're very specific on what needs to be done for the South Salt Lake Business Resource Center. When you combine both the $5,000 for fiscal year 1819 and then the lease When you combine both the $5,000 for fiscal year 1819 and then the lease space, you're looking at about $14,420 from a contribution from South Salt Lake. Give you an idea of what are in that performance-based contract may be another way to look at how you have a relationship. They would compensate at $40 per hour, but then with requirements, they visit the top 100 sales tax producers, visit additional 10 businesses a month, advertise events, et cetera, something that are a little easier to track when you start doing a review and an analysis. Now, one thing, I was asked for a recommendation to bring back to the council, and while I was doing my research, it became quickly apparent that it's very challenging to come back with a recommendation if I'm not 100% clear on what the goals are of the council and what they would like to achieve.
Councilmember Burton has a question.
Could you, do you have any ideas of what the in-kind services are?
So specific to operating the South Salt Lake Business Resource Center?
Yes.
So it's being opened during certain periods of time? Let's see if I, I'm pretty sure I've got that contract here as well. So South Salt Lake Business Resource Center shall include at least the following: outreach with local prospective businesses, signage identifying the resource center, center facilities that are inviting and comfortable, hours of operation as directed by the city. During its hours of operation, shall provide screening and referral counseling, coaching on registration, et cetera. Continue to advertise and promote the South Salt Lake Business Resource Center and a designated person to oversee and be responsible for that center.
Thank you.
So going back to where I was leading to is that it's a little bit challenging to recommend a structure if I don't know necessarily what we're trying to achieve, and I could have some assumptions. So when I looked at what the contract was, economic development, legislative advocacy, communication, feedback, and events and programs, kind of the broader functions that the council had entered into agreement with the chamber to perform. So we could come up with options to meet those, but those are more of the goals. And I start looking, well, what are the objectives to meet those goals? Those are the more measurables, for my mind. So these are more just suggestions of what I've put together. You know, if business attraction and retention, or business attraction's important, it might be a different strategy than to partner with the Chamber of Commerce than it would be to partner with a local brokerage firm. That's a different strategy and a different form that that could take. Shop local campaigns, that's another example. Legislative advocacy, I know I hear mentioned a lot. Sometimes you've got to ask the question, does regionalization give you strength in that, as opposed to just focusing in one area? Another one, do we want a strong representative business organization in West Jordan? Do we want an opportunity to have a board of, sit on the board of directors for the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce? Right now, the agreement does include a position for the council to have a board member on that position. If that agreement changed, I don't know what the outcome would be. So keep these goals in mind, and maybe your own personal goals, and what you'd like to see as we go through some options. I'm going to start with options to partner with West Jordan Chamber, and then additional options outside of the chamber. One would be to revise a new contract with specific objectives. Again, I think this is really important, that we have specific objectives that are measurable. Those could be business walks, going out and meeting with a certain number of businesses. It could be running a shop local campaign, whatever we decide. I think, again, having quarterly reports to make sure that the chamber's meeting those objectives would be important. You could create a performance-based contract.
Ken, can I, can I ask a question? Maybe David can help. When there was a district attorney that worked at the county several years ago, there was a discussion that I recall between when a government entity enters into a contract with another entity, that there's got to be a, what's that called?
Interlocal.
Not interlocal, but it's an agreement that says you have to provide more service or be able to identify more service than the financial contribution or, I'm trying to remember. It's been a few years.
So you're asking about that short decision?
Yeah. That interfaces between a government entity entering a service contract with another entity.
Mr. Short's argument with the Salt Lake County at the time was that they could not provide a service directly without getting some kind of benefit back for that contribution. And if that's answering your question, I don't know if it's in this instance.
But that has to be quantified, right? I mean, it's got to be something measurable?
That's correct. And it wasn't something that the council could simply say, "We did something back from the boys' club. As a result, we will give them something in return." And if I remember right, it was a youth group that was asking for money. Members of the council were simply going to give the money to the group, and that was a decision 20 years ago, so I'm trying to remember. And I'd turned to either lawyer to help fill in the blanks.
Well, no, I think that answered my question unless.
No, the only thing I'd had is that there have been two subsequent decisions and a state statute now written to codify that.
Okay. Thank you. Go on.
Okay. Thank you. The other one could be a contribution of lease space in exchange for services. Then finally, you could look at just a membership-only, removing the service contract and/or the lease agreement. For a basic membership, this is the highest amount of membership that's available through the chamber that I could identify. For 401-plus employees would be 2,655. Now, in my position, I have to interact with businesses all the time, and I'm continuing to look to identify additional ways to interact with businesses. The chamber is one of those options for me to interact, and so you will not see me recommend not at least partnering on a basic membership level, just because of the opportunities that I get to interact with the businesses. So looking outside of the West Jordan Chamber, thinking back to the goals of what you may want to achieve, is there's additional options. You could contract with an outside entity. So it could be a brokerage firm. Local First Utah does a lot of campaigns on shopping local, business retention firm. You could look at hiring additional West Jordan city staff to focus specifically on one of these goals. I mentioned business retention. That's one that you see in a lot of communities, where that is their sole focus is to go out and meet with businesses, identify concerns, and find a way to help them expand or at least retain them. Another option would be to partner with outside chambers for specific services. Each chamber has specific strengths, whether it's business workshops, legislative, et cetera. That conversations with both Sandy and Chamber West mention the idea of assigning a 75% staff member that would focus solely on meeting the goals as identified by the council. Then finally, you could just do a bid for services. Say, "This is what we would like to achieve." Send it out for bid and see who responds. West Jordan Chamber of Commerce could respond, private entities could respond, other nonprofits, et cetera. And as an overall discussion, this is a quote that is mainly used in architecture. I do like it, though, is that the form follows the function. So when I was saying that I have a challenge recommending courses of action, first, we need to know what the goals are, what objectives we want to meet those goals, what are the resources that we have available, and what form would best meet that? Open it up for discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Kent. Open it up to the council for any discussions with our economic development director. Thank you, Kent. I see none. Chad Lamb does. Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I can't, that Mayor Protem thing just throws me off the top of my mouth. So, you know, from the beginning of this, I don't think that we've ever wanted, as a council or as a city, to say, "Let's get rid of the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce." And I think we, overall, I think we do, they think that, we think that they do a great job. I think the whole thing that started this discussion was $48,000, why? And I don't know if that answer, for me, has been answered yet. You know, what are we getting back from the $48,000 that we spend each year? And why was that number decided on years ago? I don't have that answer for me, in front of me right now. Some of the council members might, but I still think, through all of this discussion today, discussion previously, I still don't have a good enough answer as to why it's $48,000 for the city of West Jordan, and that's where I want to get to. So I don't know what steps we can take from here, moving forward, to get that answer. I think they do a great job. I think they do a good job in helping our businesses in West Jordan. I don't know much about businesses they're bringing into West Jordan, which is another goal I think we should have, is, you know, I don't expect the Chamber of Commerce to bring business to West Jordan. That's not their full job. That's partially your job, is what we've hired you to do, and our job as a city. But at the same time, should we expect them to help us bring more businesses in as a Chamber of Commerce? And do the other Chamber of Commerce's do that in Sandy and Chamber West, et cetera. So that's just a few comments I had. I'm still stuck at the part where, why $48,000? How can we get to that? And why are we paying that much?
Maybe if I could respond. Asia, did you send, you give me a copy of, "How does the Chamber of Commerce help West Jordan City with economic development"? Did you share that with the council as well?
I'm not sure if I did or not. I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I think that would make sense. We can re-forward the, and again, there's multiple items that would meet some of these. I think I see where you're going of, why $48,000? What are the services? It's a little challenging, though, when you start trying to quantify very vague.
Well, that's the issue. We can't quantify it.
Right.
So to me, it's just a number that's out there right now, and I'm trying to quantify it.
Right.
So those are just my thoughts there. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock.
So to me, it's not the $48,000. It's $125,000 when we add in the building and the utilities. So to me, it's a bigger ask than just the 48. And I would need to see a very detailed plan on what their legislative advocacy part would be. And for me, it would need to include something for Salt Lake County and something for the state legislature, because I feel like those are things that our chamber could and should be helping us with. The more boots on the ground you have at the state capitol, working together for an entity, the better the outcome. And we definitely need to have a contract with quantifiable things. I mean, this, what I'm reading, it's like, well, okay, great. These are great ideas. How do we show that any of this occurred? And for just me, I can't. In the real recent time, I know that Asia's been here to council meetings. Prior to that, not as sure. So I need to look at whoever we contract with. I need to see the legislative part. I need to see, I would like to have them work a lot on retention, so that, you know, I feel like they're kind of the boots on the ground out there interfacing with our businesses. So rather than walking up and seeing that Johnny Kreeno's is closed, I'd like to have a heads-up that they're leaving and maybe why, so that then we could send, you know, someone could maybe send Mr. Anderson out there to see if we could change that course or alter it somehow. So those are kind of things that I would want to see.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to Councilmember McConaughey, one of the things that I've done since I've been on the council, and I love chambers, I did what Asia did for 15 years, but I just don't want to citywide, any agency, just repetitively repeat contracts. I think there's an emphasis where we can improve. I think there's an emphasis where we can be better and rethink some of the things. I'm not opposed to the West Jordan Chamber, but citywide, I want to see us look at how do we improve? How do we make the city better? So with that, I'll now turn it to Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Quick question. What's the status, our current status with the chamber? I believe our contract ended June 30, so we don't have anything in place as of this point in time, correct?
We have a month-to-month contract that is currently in place that was approved, I think, two council meetings ago.
Which is still carrying on at the anticipated $48,000 contribution?
That's correct, and similar goals.
Okay. I would like to at least continue with a regular, with at least a regular membership, since we, at least from what I've heard, it doesn't sound like we're going to come to a consensus tonight on whether or not to solidify the contract or anything beyond month-to-month. So I would like to at least pursue with a regular membership, unless there's objection from the council. And then we can continue to pursue the question as to what do we want to do with that $48,000 sponsorship.
So just for clarification, you're saying with the regular membership that we have now month-to-month at the $48,000 rate? Or are you?
No, just as a, the bottom, the bare minimum that Mr. Anderson suggested was that we continue at least as a member in the chamber. So I would like to at least put that minimum in there, so that we're a regular member for at least, at least the rest of the year, and then we can worry about upgrades on top of that membership with further debate and conversation. That's the part that I'd like to at least get that minimum recommendation in there, so that we at least have a baby step moving forward.
Okay.
And since we don't have anything, we can't approve that right now, but I would suggest we give direction to staff to bring that back, so that we could approve at least the basic membership.
So if I may, the current month-to-month contract does allow us that membership. I believe you're looking to recommend that we would have that money in place if that contract was revised or rescinded, so that that would be able to still continue to occur?
I'm saying the memberships are usually, what, a full-year membership? 12 months?
Yep.
So instead of having the month-to-month for the basic membership, right now, we've got that $2,655 membership fee. We've already paid that for the couple of months, figure out what the remainder is, so that at least that part is done, solidified. There's no question that we want to remain at least members within the chamber. And then we just look at the additions on top, the additional support that we're giving.
Okay.
Because I think we can probably come to a consensus on at least the basic membership. The rest, based on what I'm hearing, probably not going to happen tonight.
Okay.
Okay. So just to clarify, you're talking about, and you can just nod your head, but you're talking about doing a basic membership and then further discussion for what other activities? You asked your question. But Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Protem. I just about gave you a promotion there. Depending on how you look at it. A little bit of background here, I have two teenage daughters. One's 17, one's 15. They're almost 18 and 16. They do a lot of things together, and for a while, my 15-year-old was hanging out with my 17-year-old and all her friends. They would go do various things on a regular basis. And then one day, my 17-year-old decided she didn't want the little sister tagging along anymore to the same activity that she'd been tagging along to and had a rightful expectation to continue tagging along to those things, because she'd been doing it for months and months and months. I see that kind of similar, and we had a nice chat about, well, you're not entitled necessarily to the relationship continuing how it is. However, you have the right to expect that it would unless you're told a good reason why it should change. Or you're given a good, not necessarily even a good reason, but at least a lot of notice and a chance to prepare for that relationship changing. I see that as what we need to do here. If we are going to drop it from $48,000 a year to $2,600 a year, I would like to have a lot of notice built into that, so the chamber can prepare and be ready and to make the necessary adjustments, so that we can have a good opportunity to discuss what we might want to pay more than $2,600 a year for, like a guaranteed seat on the board, for example. That wouldn't come with a basic membership. Things like that. So whatever steps we take, I would just like them to be taken cautiously, judiciously, with a lot of notice, with a lot of good back-and-forth communication between staff, the council, and the chamber, so that nothing kind of hits as a surprise, and all of a sudden, they're scrambling to figure out what they're going to do next month, because they're going to have to lay off everybody, and they're not going to be able to make payroll, or whatever it is. They're not going to be able to provide any service to anybody, because we just cut off their life. So again, lots of communication, lots of back-and-forth negotiation until we come to a consensus. And it's compromise. And I don't think we're going to come to a position where everybody's happy, but hopefully we come to a position where everybody can live with what we end up with. That's kind of how our whole system works.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Councilman Jacob. I agree with what you said. I also think it would be inappropriate to suddenly change their rent on the drop of a hat or ask them to leave on certain, so I think we've got to stay to the month-to-month until we work out some other arrangements. If we drop it down to the basic membership, that also means that the services they've been doing for us will all of a sudden disappear as well, and I think we continue to need those services from them. I agree with Councilman Lamb, that the way this is written... I agree with, uh, Councilman Lamb, that the way this is written, it isn't clear on how well they're achieved. Overall, we can look at it and say, yes, we are making good progress, or no, we're not. And I think as we look at it, yes, we are making progress, we are achieving things, we are making it. But it is difficult to quantify because the contract wasn't quantified, and so we don't have a way. So I would be totally in favor of quantifying the contract so we can see that the services that the chamber has been doing fit what the city's been wanting. I believe when we do that, we will see that they have been accomplishing what has been in the contract.
Councilmember Whitelock.
So I have a clarifying question for Councilmember McConaughey. When, when you were saying just drop to the basic membership, are you saying do that instead of what our month-to-month that we're doing? Okay. So, so you are saying keep doing what we're doing, but make sure that we maintain, retain that basic membership, okay?
Go ahead. Sorry, usually, usually the mayor would give the name of the person who was about to speak for the, the audio recording, so people would know that this was Councilmember McConaughey. So that, that's why I was telling, I was waiting to hear my name to give approval.
I'll say Councilmember McConaughey. There we go.
Um, yeah, that's what I was suggesting, just so that there's some, I, I mean, with everything being month-to-month, it makes it sound like it's been suggested everything could just suddenly up and dissolve overnight. So I wanted to put some sense of stability and certainty in there by at least solidifying our basic membership. I'm not suggesting we change the regular month-to-month that we're doing for everything that's above and beyond, but at least solidify the basic membership so that it seemed that we do still have a, a commitment and we're still moving forward there. That's, that's what I was trying to suggest. Thank you for the chance to clarify.
Any questions? Councilmember Whitelock.
Okay, so I appreciate that clarification. Um, I, I in some ways agree with Councilmember Jacobs, but I feel like that we have kind of put them on notice. We, I think we started this in June, so I think that we have said, hey, we're not sure if we're going to keep this relationship going. So I'm not sure that we haven't already started that conversation.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, just some quick calculation, at forty-eight thousand a year divided by twelve, that's four thousand. Yeah, I did take math, so I'm good at that. So if I'm understanding this correctly, for the month of July, have we already paid that four thousand? And if so, we've already bought two basic memberships.
Apologize, I'm not aware on the current payment, um, that's gone out on that. I'll follow up on that for you.
And that, that, that's fine, I don't, I'm not for that answer tonight, but I guess from Chris's standpoint, I, I kind of agree with you on the basic membership, but it seems like if we've already paid July and we've, we're in the middle of August coming up, that we've already paid eight thousand. So we've already gone to the basic membership, correct? Thoughts?
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Depends on how you're doing the accounting. If you're saying it's forty-eight thousand dollars per year and, um, you're kind of prioritizing our basic membership as what we pay first and then all the others after, and kind of doing it sequentially like that, then yeah, you could, you could see it like that. Or you could view it as, um, you know what, it's that forty-eight thousand broken out over twelve months, and with each month, there's a portion to the additional support and a portion to the basic. So you could say that we've only done, uh, the, the, what is it, just about twelve hundred or so for the, or less than that because it's twenty-six hundred per year, so two hundred and some change, um, of what we paid was for the basic membership and everything else was above and beyond. Um, whatever's prorated, I'm saying, you, you could split it up a number of ways. I was thinking the more generous route of assume it's forty-eight divided by the months, figure out what this would be.
So I, the only question there was, you know, as, as far as making that stop and trying to make a decision, I, I think tonight, as a council, we should look at making it a date to make that decision because it seems like this has been going on for a few months now. And, um, I'm just wondering if the council would like to discuss maybe a date, a, a city council coming up, let's say the second September in, second September, the second meeting? City council meeting in September, making a decision to move forward with this or, or make, make a different decision. I don't know if that's a motion, but it's something that I don't want to take another three months discussing this because I think we can make the decision within the next month and a half if we need to.
Might I suggest if that's the council's desire, that perhaps Kent can work with each of you by contacting you to find out what it is that quantifies what the count, uh, what the chamber should be doing, so that when he meets with you again in September, he can have a, a, a more definitive definition of what it is that is expected. He could also have sat down by that time with, uh, Asia Wilde and figure out if that's something she can accomplish. Um, I think it's giving some direction to staff to figure out what is the relationship you're going to be considering that September evening. Does that help?
Yes. That helps. You, you won't need to call me. It's two things, and I'll, I'll publicly state them. Number one, just a different contract than what we've had. And number two, legislative at the county and the, the state legislative level. And if, that, that just needs to be added, I think, for the benefit of, of the city and, and where we're trying to take the city. Um, and so you, you won't need to call me. That's, that's the two things that I would like. Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So if I can make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to, uh, give more information to the city council so that on the second city council meeting in September, we can make a decision on where we will move forward with this, uh, West Jordan City Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Lamb, and we have a second by Councilmember Jacob. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Briggs.
If I may ask for some clarification, would you like me to continue with that membership fee and paying that piece of it, or would you like to hold that until the September meeting? The prorated portion.
Councilmember Jacob, well, you'd, you'd need to, uh, you'd need to...
Just as a comment before.
Hey, comment.
I don't, I don't think the motion has anything to do with what is already in place. It's talking about what to do next. So what's already in place would remain in place until that point.
My motion will remain.
Okay, your second still remain? Okay, seeing no further discussion, Ms. Briggs, we'll have a roll call vote.
You don't necessarily need roll to call unless you do want it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. And, uh, thank the council for assisting me.
Mayor?
Protem.
Protem.
Guess Councilmember Burton.
If this next discussion is going to be a few minutes, I would recommend you take a, a five-minute break first.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second for a five-minute recess. We'll convene at seven-twenty. It's five minutes.
Are we going to discuss the motion, vote on the motion?
Oh, yeah. All in favor? Or wait, uh, hang on. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We're only an hour and seventeen minutes into this one. I would rather, it's the last item on the agenda, I would rather just go and continue. So I'll be in opposition.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven-twenty-one is when we'll return. Any opposed? Oh, yeah, any opposed? Okay. Motion passes five to one.
Four to one.
Four to one, Kayla and I'll read. Four to one, she can vote.
So do we still have a good decision? Or just continue?
All right, uh, we'll come back in session. And our, uh, item on the agenda is discuss fiscal year 2018-2019 budget and truth in taxation public hearing scheduled for this coming Tuesday, August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six P.M. here in the council chambers. And I'll turn the time over to our city manager, David Rikki.
Thank you. Appreciate you. There you go. Thank you, council. Um, I appreciate this opportunity to once again, uh, address the issue of what the city is requesting by the way of this twenty percent or something less, uh, tax increase. Uh, the presentation last week, uh, that occurred a week ago included fourteen slides. We narrowed it down to about ten, but added two that are slightly different. So if I can advance forward through, uh, the slides, um, once again, addressing the issue of what was once a thousand dollars when you first, the city first looked at a tax adjustment after the nineteen eighty-five, uh, truth in taxation requirement set forth by the legislature. There was a change in two thousand and twelve, and now looking at a change again in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, our population is once again at approximately one hundred and fourteen thousand, and after our next census, I believe we will be the third largest city in the state of Utah. Inflation has maintained an average of about two-point-seven per year. What's significant in this slide, and this is one of the new slides that I'm sharing with the council, uh, you can see the inflation that is reflective in the past slide. Uh, this slide from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand and eighteen, seen in this slide is the blue graph that continues to climb each year since eighty-nine to what is now well over five hundred dollars with what's once was two hundred dollars. The green line reflects that which we collect by way of property tax. The line dips and moves upward just approximately two thousand and twelve. That was the last time you, the city had a tax increase. In two thousand and eighteen, the dotted line to the far right represents twenty percent. So you can see that it doesn't even begin to approach inflation. I am not suggesting that property values are tied to inflation, but it does reflect the cost of running business, and in this case, a city. Once again, this is the pie chart that Steve Jones mentioned earlier, and I do agree, Mr. Jones makes a point. There are other taxes that do not reflect this pie chart. That includes income, gas, fees that are associated with living in our community. It does reflect accurately about a dollar collected, fifteen cents, uh, arrives in this city to help pay for those costs that incurred when we run the city. Uh, its tax implication again is also for an average home, two-hundred-ninety-five-thousand-dollar home. We'd also encourage any resident to go look at our webpage, they can plug in their value and find out what they're currently paying and what would be proposed under the twelve, fifteen, eighteen, or twenty percent increase. It'll be at the bottom of that page. This is one of the second new slides. It reflects that percentage of your overall proper taxes that are, uh, collected in, uh, residents of West Jordan instance. Uh, the fifteen cents is the fif, is the red pie chart or pie coming out. The increase of twenty percent is actually an overall increase of three percent. That's the three pennies that we're asking for to achieve the twenty percent request that is, uh, exclusive to this city. Again, we have, uh, my initial request, uh, total two-point-eight million. When you strike out, uh, what, uh, the council did by, um, placing values on certain positions and opportunities within that twenty percent, that's that list that you see there in front of you. Ultimately, truth in taxation, I think, works. It is, it was put in place to require governments, municipalities to prove to its citizens and its elected bodies that what we're spending the money on is what we intend to spend it on. In this case, fire protection, police protection, crosswalks, and other services, and I would be, uh, remiss if I didn't acknowledge that there is some brine treatment programs that will help with snow removal. Um, I would like to address Councilman Jacob's one-time expenditure comments of last Wednesday. I do look at them from a managerial standpoint of being annual, whether they are police officers or firefighters. When people retire, when people leave, and we hire new people, those replacement costs are going to be there every year. And I realize we can argue about that until the cows come home, but I feel like I should put my two cents in there while I have the mic.
Council, Councilmember Jacob.
Can I just make a quick, uh, request then that they be slid over into ongoing costs? Because if they're an ongoing cost, by all means, put them in ongoing costs. But you don't need to buy the new police officer a new gun every year or a new car every, well, every three years, but you know what I mean? So just throwing that out there. You know, the boots and the taser batteries and stuff, you know, if it's an ongoing cost, put it in ongoing costs.
Yes, sir. Um, I, as I indicated to Councilman McConaughey, I would try to make this quick, and I'll finish with, again, the recognition, uh, that with a twenty percent increase, we're paying for a battery of a taser or the, or the boots of a firefighter, uh, overall for the entire year. Um, I will have some different visual aids to provide next week. Um, if you have any questions, uh, or questions of the staff, um, I'm going to leave you wanting more. So, um, if there are any other questions, um, I did try to make this short, uh, but I wanted to reiterate to the public, this is our opportunity to come speak, and, uh, this is something that's important to all residents. I had an opportunity to speak to the press yesterday, uh, expressed to the press then, and I do tonight. This is not an easy decision for you all. It impacts every individual who owns property in the city. I recognize that, whether you're a private residence or a... city. I recognize that, whether you're a private residence or a business. Property values are something that I say, Saint were saying, you should be very clear about why we need that money. And if I am not being clear, then you shouldn't award it. So that's why I want to ask again, if you have any questions, if you prefer to send them to me by email, we'll make them available on Facebook. We'll tell people what it is you're asking. We want to keep people informed what the council's concerns are.
Thank you. Councilmember Burton.
I do have a question, and perhaps you can answer it now. If not, you can make it back to me. So I hear from residents that we have a lot more residents in West Jordan now. So we should be collecting a lot more money now. My question is this way, for the cost to provide services, each time we bring a new resident in, does that, is that more or less than the cost that we collect from their property tax of the new resident? So in other words, are we making progress every time a new resident comes in? Are we receiving more money enough to pay our additional costs? Or do our additional costs that we have because that new resident is there higher than the money we're collecting their property?
Let me answer it this way. Every time a resident that's come into the city since 2012, their tax rate that they're contributing to this city is at a rate that was set six years ago. We can collect no more than what was allowed by tax rate notice and allowance then. So even though those increases are going up and costs associated with running lights, paying for paper, putting up new electrical sockets in this building, I'm going to take that shot while I got the chance.
The keyless switches?
Yes. Those cost more today than they did in 2012. So even though those residents that are coming in are helping pay, they're not paying to make the services that we are now, we are now asking of the community to maintain a standard of lifestyle standard. They're not meeting it. And I know I've heard a lot of residents and a lot of comments on Facebook and other places where they say, well, with the number of additional homes, isn't that meeting the need? It's not.
Now, the money we get from property tax is a small amount compared to the money we receive from sales tax and other sources. So the property tax isn't the only money we receive when another resident comes into West Jordan. That's the number we can qualify here, but we can't quantify how much that resident brings in for sales tax.
Well, I can tell you, because Kent Anderson, in one of his very first presentations, provided an explanation that those residents that we currently have in West Jordan are spending more money outside of our city than they spend inside. We need to change that. If we had larger retail individuals, somebody who sold cars, for instance, an auto dealership. If we had an auto dealership, that would be a million dollars right there that this wouldn't have to be, property taxes would not have to address. That's why residents of Sandy, where five car dealerships exist, they get $5 million each year from those five dealerships. Their property taxes as a result are not as high as ours. That's frustrating. That's something that doesn't make common sense. That's why you have Mr. Anderson, our office, working hard to try to bring new business to this city.
Yeah, and there was a study years ago before I moved to West Jordan, and I don't remember the dollar amounts, and I don't know if any of our finance guys do too, but there was a study that was done, I don't know if West Jordan did it when they annexed Ocker Shadows back in the late 90s. But the study, if I recall, was there, it costs $1.20 something, $1.23, $1.27 in service for every dollar in property tax generated. So as more residents move in, the tax that is paid does not cover the delivery of the services that are required.
Right. And that's the point I was making, which is why I brought in the sales tax. We're not taking into account the money that they are spending as sales tax that we want to have stayed in West Jordan. And unfortunately, we know we have leakage, which means many West Jordan residents and businesses are buying things outside of West Jordan. I'm suspecting. And if we can get that shop local thing, theme that Mr. Kent.
Anderson.
Anderson was talking about, I think that would either reduce, or it could even eliminate this call for a property tax, because we could generate much more money than we'll generate from property tax here. And then there's, the other thing about that is then it's a choice. They choose to buy something, and they're doing it. Here, they buy something, and every year they're taxed on something they've already purchased. And that's really strange, where everything else we buy in this life, we pay for the tax on it once. For property, we buy it once, we pay for it every year over and over again. So maybe property tax isn't the best way to increase the revenue in a city. Just say it.
Appreciate that. Councilmember Whitelock.
I would argue that it's a more stable way to increase revenue for a city because sales tax goes wherever currently, unless something changes at the legislature. But currently, the way our sales tax works is its point of sale. It's not zip code. And that becomes problematic. We've also had a big uptick in online sales, where many areas, that's tax-free. And who wouldn't do that? Of course you would. Now, we are supposed to, the legislature, there is a bill, you are supposed to be paying on those. But I know the revenue collected that way is very, very small, if any. So that's where our problem comes in. It would be great if sales tax could pay for it, but it's a very unstable way. And we're looking at fixed costs that are reoccurring that we need to pay for. Hence, we need a stable way to pay for those, not a fluctuating way.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have a question for Mayor Protam. Sorry. Gosh, old habits, or just habits. I actually have a question for David. And this is only tangentially related, but since we're looking at revenues on the general fund, the transient room tax, we built two new hotels in the last, well, we didn't. Two new hotels have been built in our city in the last year and a half. And maybe this is a better question for Kent. But the transit room tax has not gone up. I mean, the revenues collected has not gone up. And in fact, this year, on the proposed budget, it's $5,000 less than it was last year on the year-end estimate, and $68,000 less than the last year's budget. Any thoughts on why that's so much lower?
Sorry, I'm just trying to bring up, I've actually got those numbers on our economic snapshot that will show. And what I was showing, if I recollect, is we're at $92,000 in revenue this last fiscal year, which is higher than the prior years.
Oh, it is. But the transit room tax on the budget estimated is $37,612 for the 17, 18 fiscal year estimate.
Yeah, I couldn't respond to why that number's showing up on there.
If that's $60,000 off, then I'd sure like to know why. And then the budgeted number for the coming year should be probably $60,000 higher.
Yeah, we'll look into that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Before I turn it to Councilmember Burton, I just had a quick question that, I can't remember if it was Councilmember Jacob or Councilmember Whitelock brought up, I think it was Councilmember Whitelock, about the online sales tax. They just had a special session. Do we have an estimation on what that may mean to West Jordan City, the change with the sales tax?
Most, most studies, Mayor Protam, most studies are showing that that money's already been allocated, that we're not going to see any of that. Is that your understanding?
Yeah, beginning, I'm going to say four years ago, it may have been five, it may have been three. But about four years ago, the state tax commission began negotiating with Amazon, eBay, a number of the online sales. And they already have in-place agreements where they are already collecting those taxes. And so what we've been told is that the expectation is much higher than what the reality will be, since most of those are already being collected.
But is the state law that they changed because of the court decision on a collection of online purchases, the sales tax from online purchases, does any of that trickle to the city?
So Mayor Protam, I think what you're referencing is the court case where they just ruled that the sales tax had to be collected. And what Attorney Wallace is saying, that Utah had already entered into agreements with most of the major retailers in those, in that industry. So that, that ruling's not going to really affect Utah. And the money that would be collected is already being collected and has already been allocated and being spent in other places. So, no.
All right. Thank you. And then the second one, and I'll get Councilmember Burton. There was an article I read where Sandy City is actually looking at a property tax increase because 75% of their revenue is sales tax-based. And I don't, Rob, that's kind of where you were.
Yeah, I can comment on that. Not the details most recently, but I can tell you that over the last, I think it started eight years ago, they've had five car dealerships leave Sandy City. Three of them went to South Jordan, and two of them went to Draper. And it was a huge hit, to the tune of about a million dollars a year. And even though they have their used car lots, they have taken a huge hit because of their sales tax. Much of the development that you see going on the freeway around the city hall is trying to address that by bringing in business, since that's where the real property tax revenues lie. That's what I can tell you about what's happening there.
Hey. And thank you for indulging me, Councilmember Burton. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So you brought up another thing, which I'll bring up first. When you talked about the sales tax, for the online sales tax, I think that's a great thing for our legislators to address this next session. I think we should be getting our percentage from online sales tax, just like we do the local sales tax, and tie them to the zip code, as Councilmember Whitelock was suggesting. So something to carry off our legislators. And then the other thing, I just want to follow up on the property tax. Use an example of my father, who's in the house that I grew up in, is still in that house. His property tax now on that house is higher than his house payments have ever been. And that shows me, that tells me that something's not right, when you're continuing to pay for something you own over and over again. And his tax is higher than his payment was when he first started, when he's making monthly payments on his house. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Have anything else, Mr. Bricky?
No. If, in the meantime, as we move towards Tuesday, if there's a question any of the council members have, please send them to me. We'll try to get answers from the professionals who are here at the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from council? I don't see any. All right. So saying nothing, I will reiterate to, make sure you send your questions into the staff prior to Tuesday so that we can get all that squared away. That concludes the agenda other than remarks. So if we have anyone, we do have remarks. Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes. I wrote it down so I could remember it. Mr. Bricky, I would like to ask for the general ledger showing all expenses paid for or incurred during May and June. Also, if any purchases, purchase orders have been issued or approved but not yet paid, I would like to see those. And this is in response to what our citizens have been conveying to me. So I want to do my due diligence and, and just review those. So if I, if I could ask for those, I would appreciate it.
Can I just clarify, were those purchase orders for items in May and June or a set period of time? Did I miss that?
May and June.
May and June. All right. I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think, I can't remember who it was, Councilmember Burton. It's all, the names are shifting. Councilmember Burton.
Thank you. So to finish up on what I was talking about earlier, and thanks for the gentle reminder on that, on the inflatables. So if the, if council is agreeable, I would like staff to either come up with a plan to eliminate inflatables altogether, or a plan where residents may use inflatables in parks with cities can do it. I mean, if the city can do it, then residents can do it as well.
Hey, Councilmember McConaughey.
So in response to Councilmember Burton's request, that would require a change to code. And rather than directing staff to make a specific change to code, I think it would be probably a better use of time to bring it back to an agenda and have a full conversation among the entire council. And then we all give them direction after that conversation as to what to prepare, so that we don't prepare one thing, but then end up sending them a different direction.
Okay. I guess the reason I was thinking this way is there might be some real good reasons why we don't want to do that. And I thought maybe we'd get that earlier or later. But there might not be. I don't know. It could be history out there. Okay. And then the other item is, if I may, while I have the floor, is ask Mr. Bricky, does there exist, and if so, I would like a copy, a chart that shows all the employees in West Jordan and their positions of who is, answers to whom?
We can. We just, within, I think, last council meeting, we had the approval of the employees who were full-time and part-time. And so that could be slightly altered. I could put names on there, but that would give you an immediate. Joel obviously has an idea as well.
Do you want, we have one already that shows the hierarchy and how it breaks down. And it shows it by department, in which department falls under the sub-department, and the sub-department's under that. It doesn't have every single employee by name on it, but it will have every single position that's within the city.
It could be positioned. It doesn't need to necessarily be named. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So a question for Public Works. Comment, first of all, it's a little bit weird driving home and not seeing all the construction at 70th and Redwood. So it's kind of soothing to still see that there's a whole bunch of orange barricades that are out there. They're kind of in the middle and off on the sides of the road. But since there's not actually work being done, I was wondering, are those just leftovers? Are those the city's? Does a contractor need to remove them? Is there something coming up for which those are going to be used? And I know I didn't give you any time to prepare for that one. So maybe the better question would be, if you don't know off the top of your head, could you check and see what the story is with those barricades? And if they could be removed and give people some, some feeling of order that, okay, we're done with construction for at least one solid weekend?
Yes, I'll follow up on that. I'll find out what the status is of those.
Exactly. We are, they are working on. There's still a lot there in the middle and on the side. So that's, that's fair enough.
I'll follow up.
And seeing that there are no other council members lined up behind me, I would further make a motion that we move to closed session to discuss character professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual, and/or strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, and/or strategy session to discuss purchase, purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form of water rights or shares, and then adjourn from there.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember McConaughey, seconded by Councilmember Burton to go into closed session. Any discussion? Nope. Ms. Briggs.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Vote passes six in favor.
Thank you.